Welcome to NTD News. I'm Kevin Hogan. Here are today's top stories. The U.S. says it will support Israel no matter which Israeli government has power, as opposition leaders try to oust the current leader. But how might it impact U.S. relations? Former State Secretary Mike Pompeo confirms there is intense opposition from within the State Department to probing the Wuhan lab. Top GOP lawmakers are demanding Fauci's emails be fully revealed to the public. President Biden proposes creating a minimum corporate tax rate of 15%. He put forward the plan in negotiations with Republicans over how to pay for an infrastructure bill. A third sheriff in Virginia announces he's leaving the Democratic Party to join Republicans. He says it's because of relentless attacks by Democrat politicians against law enforcement. Georgia's governor applauds the school board for passing a resolution that opposes critical race theory being taught in Georgia schools. The United States says it will continue to support Israel no matter what government is in place. It comes as opposition groups try to oust Israel's current leader, and Israel's Defense Minister visits the U.S. to seek continued support. NTD's Jessica Beatty reports.
Israeli Defense Minister Benny Gantz visited Washington to reaffirm U.S. security commitments to Israel. It comes as the country weathers its greatest political upheaval in years and the aftermath of last month's war with Hamas terrorists in Gaza.
There is no question that we are in the time of great changes and new challenges.
U.S. Defense Secretary Lloyd Austin reiterated support for Israel's right to defend itself. He also said President Biden supports replenishing Israel's missile defense system.
Now going forward, we seek lasting security for Israelis and Palestinians alike. Let me also stress that the Department of Defense supports President Biden's goal of a two-state solution.
Gantz's visit comes as Israeli opposition leaders try to oust Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu, ending his record 12 years in power. The coalition consists of eight parties with little in common, except their shared goal of ousting him. One Middle East expert says it'll be complicated for Americans to build relationships with a group of potential new leaders who disagree on many issues.
Netanyahu is from the far right. We shouldn't equivocate about this. He is ideologically and very openly opposed to the two-state solution. He rejects that completely.
But he says others are more in line with the Biden administration, like the next foreign minister if he succeeds.
These are much more in line with figures that America knows how to deal with. They are at least ostensibly pro-two-state solution.
The alliance includes hardliners previously allied with Netanyahu, as well as center-left parties, and even an Arab faction, a first in Israeli politics. Sacks said it could help on the question of Jewish-Arab coexistence.
So in that regard, it would be a new chapter, a very dramatic change from a long Netanyahu era.
Netanyahu's opponents are pushing for a quick parliament vote to formally end the prime minister's lengthy rule. Jessica Beatty, NTD News.
President Biden proposes creating a minimum corporate tax rate of 15% as a way to pay for an infrastructure bill. He also floats a plan to increase funding for the IRS to tighten tax enforcement. President Biden makes an offer to Republicans over how to pay for an infrastructure bill. He's proposing a minimum corporate tax rate of 15%, along with tighter enforcement by the IRS, which he says will bring in more revenue. Biden and Republicans are negotiating on a bipartisan infrastructure package. His initial offer was a $2.3 trillion plan that included hiking the corporate tax rate to 28% and spending on social programs. Republicans came back with a $568 billion plan focused on physical infrastructure. Republicans say they won't support a plan that increases the corporate tax rate, which was slashed to 21% during the Trump administration. Senator Shelley Capito is leading the negotiations for Republicans. She says the two sides are inching toward one another. Capito says some of the money from the COVID-19 relief package has nothing to do with the virus. She and Senate Minority Leader Mitch McConnell say unspent money from that package should go towards infrastructure instead. White House Press Secretary Jen Psaki says the White House and Republicans are negotiating in good faith and looking for areas of agreement. Biden has trimmed his latest proposal down to $1.7 trillion. Republicans made an offer of just under $1 trillion. The two sides are set to continue negotiations Friday and may work into the weekend. President Biden will not create a presidential commission to investigate the January 6th events at the Capitol. White House Press Secretary Jen Psaki announced the news in a statement Thursday. This comes as no surprise, given other Democratic leaders had already dismissed the idea of a presidential commission. Psaki said in the statement that the president firmly agrees with House Speaker Nancy Pelosi that Congress has the unique role and ability to carry out that investigation. Pelosi is prepared to initiate a House-led investigation. A sheriff in Virginia says he's leaving the Democratic Party over treatment of law enforcement by Democrat politicians. He's the third sheriff in Virginia within the last year to switch from Democrat to Republican.
Smith County Sheriff Chip Schuler says he's leaving the Democratic Party and becoming a Republican. Schuler was elected sheriff as a Democrat in 2015, but is now making the shift over what he's called relentless attacks on law enforcement from state and national politicians. Schuler released a statement announcing his decision. He says, "My deputies work hard to serve and protect the citizens of Smith County. As sheriff, it has been difficult to watch my deputies try to move forward during this unprecedented assault on our profession. We remain an honorable profession and should not be judged by the bad acts of a few." Adam Tolbert chairs the Smith County Republican Party. He says he's thrilled to welcome Schuler to the GOP. Tolbert notes that Schuler is the third Virginia sheriff to switch from Democrat to Republican in the last year, and added that the sheriffs of Tazewell County and Buchanan County also switched to the GOP several months ago. In announcing his switch, Buchanan County Sheriff John McClanahan released a statement saying, "Currently, the Democratic Party is going against everything I stand for, pushing for defunding the police and the taking away of safeguards that have been put in place for us, and I can no longer be associated with the National Democratic Party." Some Democratic politicians and activists have called for defunding the police after the death of George Floyd in police custody last summer. That policy has grown increasingly unpopular with the American public over the last year. A recent poll shows just 18% of Americans now support defunding the police.
How are southern counties in Texas coping with the influx of illegal immigrants? A chief deputy and a rancher tell NTD how their county is doing so far and what their main concerns are. NTD's Allison Lee has that story.
Jackson County, Texas, has a population of just 5,500 and is over 150 miles away from the southern border. But the county's chief deputy tells NTD they are still seeing a huge increase in illegal immigrants on bailouts compared to last year.
We've come across stolen vehicles coming out of Houston headed to the valley, bailouts, numerous bailouts, especially up in the northern area of Jackson County.
The chief deputy says a major highway going through Jackson County is a main corridor that illegal immigrants travel on. Traffickers would set up staging areas where immigrants get dropped off and transfer vehicles. Luckily, Jackson County hasn't seen a rise in crime, but the sheriff's office has arrested and charged numerous people for trafficking.
We've arrested illegal aliens, people transporting illegal aliens for profit. We've had, since early January, we've had like 17 different cases.
A local rancher tells NTD his biggest concern is that while children play around during the day, they might come across human traffickers without knowing.
Well, it used to be at nighttime. It was always at nighttime, but starting this year, back in January, it'd be in the middle of the day, broad daylight, 10 o'clock in the morning, or even 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, they'd come through.
The rancher says this has been happening over the past two to three years, but the situation has gotten a lot worse since January this year. Illegal immigrants are leaving behind a lot more trash.
This is the trash left behind. They'll pull in here, and I don't know if they sit here and take a break or what they do, but they'll leave trash all in the brush, all scattered around here where they pull off of the county road.
The rancher says his day-to-day activities haven't been much impacted, but he hopes the federal government can place more agents at the border. He says stopping trafficking at the border is the best way to deal with the problems in his county. Allison Lee, NTD News.
The Justice Department will elevate ransomware investigations to a similar level of priority as terrorism. That's in an effort to defeat cybercriminals threatening the nation. This comes after several recent cyberattacks targeted key infrastructure and industries in the United States. Ransomware hackers recently disrupted operations at the world's largest meat supplier. The department says they have created a task force in Washington that will coordinate all ransomware investigations. Currently, those investigations are handled by U.S. Attorney's Offices in different states. Reuters says it will help authorities draw necessary connections between separate attacks. The department says this model has been used in terrorism cases, but never before with ransomware. The Justice Department also asked U.S. attorneys to also share information about other kinds of cybersecurity cases. A new project from billionaires Bill Gates and Warren Buffett. They're joining hands to build a nuclear power plant in Wyoming. NTD's Christina Kim brings us the details.
Pacificor, which is owned by Warren Buffett's Berkshire Hathaway, is teaming up with Bill Gates's TerraPower for a joint initiative. Wyoming's Governor Mark Gordon announced the plan to host a first-of-its-kind nuclear power plant on Wednesday.
And today's announcement really truly is game-changing and monumental for Wyoming.
The nuclear power plant will be built at a soon-to-be-retired coal-fired plant over the next several years. According to TerraPower, the project features a 345-megawatt sodium-cooled fast reactor with a molten-salt-based energy storage system. This would produce enough power for roughly 250,000 homes. Gordon says this will help one of the state's energy goals, but made it clear that fossil fuels, which he called "the bedrock of their economy," isn't going anywhere.
Earlier this year, I set a goal for Wyoming to be a carbon-negative state and continue to use fossil fuels. I'm going, I am not going to abandon any of our fossil fuel industry.
The plant will be a multi-billion-dollar project, and the costs will be split evenly between the government and private industry. That's according to TerraPower's president and CEO. Wyoming is both a top coal mining and top uranium mining state. The reactor proposal comes as the Biden administration seeks to reduce carbon emissions by half compared to 2005 levels. They hope to achieve this by 2030. Christina Kim, NTD News.
Georgia Governor Brian Kemp applauds the State Board of Education for passing a resolution against teaching the quasi-Marxist critical race theory in schools. Kemp said via Twitter that "this dangerous anti-American ideology has no place in Georgia schools." The resolution states that the United States and Georgia are not inherently racist, and students should not be taught that racism and slavery are anything but deviations from the country's authentic founding principles. Supporters of the theory argue that it is merely demonstrating how pervasive systemic racism truly is. The measure passed by the Education Board doesn't impose restrictions on school districts or teachers, though it could lead to binding rules in the future. A growing number of states are passing laws prohibiting critical race theory in schools and other government institutions. A county in North Carolina bans Coke machines in government buildings. The move comes in response to criticism by Coca-Cola of Georgia's election security law. Surrey County Commissioner Eddie Harris explains the move to remove Coke machines to WXIIITV. He says that many people don't believe the 2020 election was fair, and Georgia passed a law to protect secure elections. He called out Coca-Cola for claiming that the Georgia law is racist while doing business with a Chinese regime that carries out genocide against ethnic minorities. He notes that Coca-Cola is silent about the concentration camps and human rights abuses there. Harris says that the American Left cancels and boycotts, but they don't expect the other side to respond. He says that isn't okay. A spokesperson for Coca-Cola consolidated. A bottling company, separate from Coca-Cola, told the outlet that the firm is trying to hold with meeting the Surrey County executives about the move. Senator Ted Cruz wins in federal court. He sued the Federal Election Commission over a cap on post-election contributions candidates can use to repay personal loans they make to their campaign. Cruz brought the lawsuit in an attempt to strike down a section of the Bipartisan Campaign Reform Act of 2002. It allowed a campaign to only repay $250,000 of a candidate's pre-election loans with post-election contributions. Any balance of that personal loan that exceeded $250,000 would be treated as a contribution by the candidate. In 2018, Cruz made loans totaling $260,000 to his campaign. Under the law, the $10,000 balance would be deemed a campaign contribution. Cruz and his campaign argue that such a limit violates the First Amendment, as it restricts political speech. Top Republican lawmakers are demanding that Fauci's emails be unredacted, and they want him to testify before Congress. This comes as former State Secretary Mike Pompeo confirms intense opposition from within the U.S. government to investigating the Wuhan lab. Here are the details.
Former Secretary of State Mike Pompeo confirmed on Thursday that his efforts to understand how the CCP virus spread from China to the U.S. met with opposition from within the State Department and intelligence bureaucracies. On Thursday, Vanity Fair reported that key officials deep within the State Department tried to keep the public from knowing that the U.S. had supported gain-of-function research at China's Wuhan Institute of Virology. That kind of research focuses on ways to make viruses more contagious and transmissible to humans. When asked about this, Pompeo described a contentious battle. U.S. tax dollars partially funded that research as far back as 2012 through the NIH and nonprofit Eco Health Alliance. Documents show that about $600,000 of a grant given to Eco Health Alliance was channeled to the Wuhan lab to research coronavirus in bats. The director of Eco Health wrote Fauci an email thanking him for publicly stating scientific evidence supports a natural origin for COVID, not a lab release. Fauci replied, saying, "Many thanks for your kind note." Eco Health didn't immediately reply to NTD's request for comment. House GOP lawmakers are demanding Fauci's communications be unredacted. They also want him to testify. Fauci told CNN and MSNBC the email from Eco Health has been misconstrued. Responding to a question about whether he had a cozy relationship with researchers at the Wuhan lab, he said, "That's nonsense. I don't even see how they get that from that email." Fauci has denied that his agency, the NIAID, was involved in gain-of-function research on viruses. The White House responded after Fauci's emails were dumped. Press Secretary Jen Psaki says Fauci is an undeniable asset amid the pandemic. The former White House testing czar Admiral Brett Garah told Fox News Fauci lied about the origin of the virus in 2020. He says Fauci pushed the possibility of the virus developing naturally without sufficient data. Fauci's book, Expect the Unexpected, was pulled from online stores. The publisher said the release was connected to a documentary, but was up for sale prematurely. Senator Rand Paul criticized the book, calling it "science fiction."
Coming up, the American Museum of Natural History in New York City reopens one of its exhibits, which has been closed for years, but it was one of the most popular attractions. The nightlife scene begins to return in New York City. Waitstaff, DJs, and event planners discuss the rough year they've had and try to start the party again. Find out more in just a moment. U.S. intelligence officials say they haven't found any evidence that a series of unidentified aerial phenomena were alien spacecraft. These UFOs were observed mostly by Navy aviators in recent years. Many pilots were baffled by what they saw. Some of the objects reportedly reached inexplicable speeds or hung in the sky for hours. But officials admit they can't explain the sightings. That's according to a New York Times report that cites unnamed senior government officials. And the paper says these officials have seen a highly anticipated government report, which they claim determines that most of the incidents did not originate from any American military or other advanced U.S. government technology. There have been over 120 incidents documented over the past two decades. The unclassified report is set to be released to Congress later this month. The American Museum of Natural History in New York City is best known for its dinosaurs. But there's another hall visitors especially enjoy, and it's about to reopen. NTD's Arian Passar visited the museum.
Who doesn't like hidden gems? But these aren't hidden anymore. They are now in exhibition here at the Hall of Gems and Minerals. New Yorkers have been waiting for the opening, but not because of COVID. They actually closed the hall four years ago. Now it's finally open again, and they say it rocks. Some of the specimens seen in the museum were found by New York City construction workers when they built the metro tunnels under the Big Apple. But of course, not all come from New York. The redesigned halls feature more than 5,000 specimens sourced from almost 100 countries. Some of those are the largest stipnike specimen, which comes from China. It weighs almost half a ton and has hundreds of sword-like crystals. Or the singing stone, a massive block found in Arizona and first exhibited in Chicago in the 1890s. One of the curators of the renewed hall explains its design.
In this exhibition, all the jewels are grouped together. It's not a chronological march down time. And I believe that this allows you to easily compare and contrast designs over time and see how things change in terms of gems and metal and designs.
The museum is already open again to the public, but if you want to visit this hall specifically, you're going to have to wait just a little bit more, because they are going to open to the public on June 12th. I'm Arian Passar, NTD News, New York.
It's been a rough year for the leisure and hospitality industries. After the pandemic forced hotels, restaurants, and bars to adapt, now in New York, the party is almost back. Here's NTD's Andrew Thomas with the story.
23-year-old waitress Taylor Cross is finally back to full-time work, hired by the Harbor New York City Club. Her new job comes after months of dealing with part-time because of the pandemic. The Sheik Lounge opened for brunch on May 15.
It was super difficult. I actually graduated into this pandemic as of last May, so just coming into no job market was probably such a huge disappointment and definitely challenging to, you know, get used to.
According to the Labor Department, almost half of the jobs lost in the U.S. since February of 2020 were in the leisure and hospitality business. The sector has also been the biggest recipient of unemployment benefits.
Yeah, I feel like a lot of people don't want to come back because of unemployment, but however, it's going to run out. I feel like we're going to make what we make in a week of unemployment in a day or two here.
John Paul Pezzo, a program director at Harbor New York City, says they're facing a shortage of workers as well.
Another big challenge is finding staff. As much as the stimulus money and all the extra federal unemployment is needed, like that's a lifesaver for many, it's now blowing back and hurting us because, you know, a lot of people are just like, you know, why work?
To make ends meet, some venue workers, like DJ Wonder, switched to other careers. He started helping other DJs stream their performances and marketing for them. Madison Back runs the 4AM Company, which supplies DJs and producers for live events. She said she lost most of her clients in March last year, but she managed to keep her staff on board and stay afloat by gearing her company toward online events.
The hardest part right now is still, we're still in this period of sort of a bit of unknown. I think I speak for a lot of industry professionals when I say that we all have quite a bit of PTSD from the past 15 months.
But Back also sees a lot of positive changes in the industry, and says everyone is helping each other out to get back to throwing spectacular parties. Andrew Thomas, NTD News.
Just ahead, lawyer F. Lee Bailey dies at the age of 87. Bailey is famous for representing O.J. Simpson in The Trial of the Century, along with many other famous cases. More on that here on NTD News.
If you're like most of us, you're probably getting fed up with the nonsense that's going on in the banking system. Did you know that top U.S. banks have recently amended their depositor terms and conditions to include the words "bank failure" and what's required of you in 24 hours if, or should I say when, it happens? Don't get blindsided by your bank. Call GSI Exchange today to pick up your complimentary copy of The Bank Failure Survival Guide at 866-424-2382. We'll also send you the required format to file with your bank within 24 hours of their failure, which is now required by the top banks to avoid freezing of your funds. Yes, the top banks can now freeze your money. The world is in a strange place, and banks are constantly changing the rules. So stay on top of the current events that really matter by calling GSI Exchange and requesting your free guide at 866-424-2382.
Hello, I'm Mike Lindell, inventor of MyPillow. Thanks to your support, you've helped make MyPillow become one of the fastest-growing companies in America. Over the last 12 years, you've helped MyPillow create thousands of jobs right here in the USA.
When I got MyPillow, I'm asleep almost immediately. I stay asleep at night, and I wake up more well-rested in the morning.
That's why I invented MyPillow. My patented fill adjusts to your exact individual needs and helps keep your neck supported and aligned. I'm interrupting this commercial right now. Retailers have canceled MyPillow, and to thank you for your support, I'm going to pass the savings directly on to you. For example, you get my six-piece Towels, regular $109.99, now only $44.98. Or MyPillow Dog Bets for as low as $19.99 with your promo code.
For the best night's sleep in the whole wide world, visit mypillow.com.
A lawyer who represented football star O.J. Simpson, heiress Patty Hearst, and the Boston Strangler suspect has died on Thursday. We revisit some moments in his dramatic career.
Dog tracks.
That's right.
F. Lee Bailey, best known as O.J. Simpson's defense lawyer in The Trial of the Century, died at age 87 on Thursday. He and co-counsel Robert Shapiro led the successful defense in Simpson's sensational double murder trial in 1994. Simpson, who was acquitted of murder following the trial, posted a tribute to Bailey on Twitter.
F. Lee Bailey, maybe the best lawyer of our time, of his generation, but a great guy. God bless his family. God bless you, Lee. You'll be missed by me.
In his career, Bailey brought drama, swagger, and cunning to the courtroom. During his heyday, he told the New York Times, quote, "I can't say no to a case if it has one of three qualities: professional challenge, notoriety, or a big fee." Bailey became one of the most famous lawyers in the country, with victories that included a 1966 appeal for Sam Shepard, a Cleveland doctor convicted of murdering his wife, as well as an acquittal for a figure in the My Lai massacre of the Vietnam War. Bailey, who built a reputation for incisive cross-examination, also defended figures like the suspected Boston Strangler Albert De Salvo and kidnapped heiress Patty Hearst. Bailey later fell into legal trouble himself and was briefly jailed for doing business with a marijuana dealer in Florida. He was later disbarred there for multiple counts of egregious misconduct, including offering false testimony. In June 2016, he filed for bankruptcy due to a $5 million federal tax bill. Once, Bailey summed up his courtroom approach by telling the Times, quote, "I use the law to frustrate the law, but I didn't set up the ground rules. I'm only a player in the game."
Supersonic flights are on their way back to the commercial air travel market. United Airlines has agreed to buy 15 supersonic jets from Boom Technology. They look similar to Concorde, another type of supersonic aircraft, but Boom says its Overture jets are 75% cheaper to operate and more environmentally friendly. Overture jets cost $200 million each. They can travel 1,300 miles per hour, or about twice as fast as conventional jetliners. United says the speed is enough to offer routes from Newark to London that only take three hours, and flights to Japan from San Francisco in six hours. United plans to start piloting the planes in 2029. California's Disneyland has an all-new Avengers campus. It will be opening to the public on Friday. Here's NTD's Eileen Eng with the details.
Spider-Man will fly high above Disneyland Resort's newly redesigned Avengers Campus in California when it starts welcoming the public on Friday. Action heroes will be seen tumbling through the air as guests below meet Iron Man, Black Panther, and other Marvel superheroes on the six-acre campus. Highlights include an aerial Spider-Man robot that performs somersaults while flying 60 feet in the air.
Here at Avengers Campus, you're going to experience more heroes in one location than any other place in this universe. We have experiences where you're going to get to see Spider-Man climb up a wall, crawl across the rooftops. He's going to soar high above the campus. And then over here at the Avengers headquarters, you're going to see Black Widow and Black Panther square off against bad guys all day long.
Guests can also ride a Spider-Man attraction called Web Slingers, where they team with the character to battle out-of-control spiderbots. Physical sets and virtual environments will blend to make the visitors feel like they are slinging webs, just like the character, designers said.
Well, I think the great thing is it's a living place. You never know when the next hero will appear. And so every time you come back into this land, you potentially could see something new, a new experience, a new character, a new hero. So that's what's really great. It's that dynamic feeling that it's always changing, always evolving.
Food options for the new campus include a cart offering shawarma, mini pasta, impossible meatballs, soda, and more. The Disneyland Resort reopened to the public on April 30th after being closed for more than a year due to the pandemic. As part of the ongoing safety measures, Disneyland is accepting guests only from California until June 15th. Afterwards, it will start allowing visitors from other states. Guests are currently required to wear face masks. Eileen Eng, NTD News, California.
Still to come, Hong Kong arrests the organizer of a vigil to commemorate the 1989 Tiananmen Square massacre, as the city bans the vigil two years in a row. LinkedIn now censors some users' content in China. They say it's to respect local law, but critics accuse them of kowtowing to the regime. Stay tuned to find out more. Hong Kong police arrested an organizer of Hong Kong police arrested an organizer of annual vigils for the victims of China's 1989 Tiananmen Square clampdown on pro-democracy protesters. Some say it's an act of suppression against one of the city's most powerful symbols of democratic hope. Here's more on Hong Kong.
An organizer of Hong Kong's annual vigil marking China's 1989 Tiananmen crackdown was arrested on Friday. Thirty-six-year-old Chow Hang Tung usually helps organize Hong Kong's June 4th vigil, the world's largest vigil to mark those who died during the bloody crackdown. But this year, there will be no candles lit at Victoria Park. Police have banned the vigil for a second year in a row, citing the coronavirus. Chow told Reuters this week before her arrest that June 4th was a test for Hong Kong of whether, quote, "we can defend our bottom line of morality." Activists have called it a suppression of one of the city's most powerful symbols of democratic hope. On the streets, thousands of police were out on patrol to prevent people from gathering. A police official confirmed the arrest of a 36-year-old member of the Hong Kong Alliance in support of patriotic democratic movements of China, and a 20-year-old food delivery man for promoting an unauthorized assembly. Friday's anniversary is the first since Beijing imposed a sweeping national security law on its freest city last year. Under the law, subversion, secession, terrorism, or colluding with foreign forces are punishable by up to life in prison. Many residents said they planned on lighting a candle in their neighborhood, and some churches were open for prayer.
The U.S. State Department and the Congressional Executive Commission on China both condemned the Chinese Communist Party's brutality ahead of the anniversary. Secretary of State Antony Blinken wrote that Beijing's Tiananmen Square is now synonymous with the brutal actions of the CCP in 1989. He added that "the United States will continue to stand with the people of China as they demand that their government respect universal human rights," saying "the U.S. honors the sacrifices of those killed 32 years ago and the brave activists who carry on their efforts today in the face of ongoing government repression." A Dutch nonprofit says TikTok fails to protect millions of young users' privacy and safety. It filed a lawsuit against the video-sharing platform on behalf of 64,000 parents.
A Dutch nonprofit this week registered a collective action with a Dutch court on behalf of 64,000 parents from the Netherlands and other EU countries. Somi alleges TikTok violates children's privacy by collecting data without proper permission. And it does not disclose what the data is used for and where it is stored. Recent reports say users' data is sent to China. With this, the platform breaches European privacy law. TikTok is owned by Chinese tech giant Byte Dance and has 700 million users worldwide. Somi also says TikTok fails to protect minors' safety. There have been several deaths globally associated with so-called TikTok challenges. A 10-year-old Italian girl in January died after participating in a choking challenge promoted on the platform. A lawyer working with Somi on the case says the risk of children on TikTok should not be underestimated and the good intentions of TikTok should not be overestimated. It often seems nice and harmless, but TikTok is just a profiling and advertising machine. Parents who join the suit can receive compensation of up to 1,700 pounds for under 13-year-olds. Somi says the total claim amount can reach more than 1.2 billion pounds. Its co-director says it's more than about compensation.
In the end, we hope that regulators will take over and force TikTok to change their way of doing it. That's the ultimate purpose. We, as a small organization, we are not really capable of doing TikTok harm. There has to be somebody with a iron fist.
Somi hopes the suit will make the Irish Data Protection Commissioner take action. They are the regulator responsible for TikTok. Somi filed a complaint with the commissioner in April. TikTok says it believes it's not a violation of European law. This is not the first lawsuit against the platform. In the U.K., former children's commissioner Anne Longfield in April sued TikTok on behalf of 3.5 million children. And the EU Commission gave the platform last week one month to respond to child safety concerns raised by European consumer protection agencies.
LinkedIn is blocking access to certain content, but only for those visiting the site in China. The platform's notice to users says the move aims to fulfill local legal requirements. NTD's Tiffany Meyer brings us the details.
LinkedIn is apparently blocking access to some content for users in China. It's in order to, as they call, "respect legal requirements." This, according to screenshots LinkedIn users posted on Twitter. American writer and political commentator Ben Wangarten posted an official message LinkedIn sent to him. It says, "Your profile and activity, such as items you share with your network, are not visible to those accessing LinkedIn from within China at this time." He posted the screenshot on June 3rd with a comment that says, "Unbelievable, yet totally believable." On the eve of the Tiananmen Square massacre, a sign of the world's continued kowtowing to the Chinese Communist Party. Thirty-two years ago, on June 4th, Chinese soldiers opened fire on unarmed students and citizens in Beijing's Tiananmen Square and nearby areas. It's estimated that thousands of people died. This after students protested for months against CCP officials' corruption and demanded democracy. Taiwan-based writer and consultant J. Michael Cole also noticed similar LinkedIn restrictions. In an official notice sent to him, the company says, "We will work with you to minimize the impact if you update the publication section of your profile," adding, "But the decision whether to update your profile is yours." A comment on Twitter mocks LinkedIn's notice, saying this is a "false choice" and a "forced choice." The comment says the Chinese Communist Party excels at presenting people with "false choices." The notice also says LinkedIn offers a localized version in China. But another Twitter user believes using the term "localized" is pathetic, saying LinkedIn's creative use of localized version is another way of saying censorship. The comment says, "Please don't abuse this word. You're just afraid of the Chinese government." NTD cannot yet independently verify what prohibited content refers to. Cole gives a list of items that the Chinese regime may consider to be sensitive, including Taiwan, Hong Kong, Xinjiang, the South China Sea, among others. The social network platform started operating in China since 2014. It decided to stick to the CCP censorship laws to get access, and now has over 50 million users across China. Earlier this year, LinkedIn announced it is pausing new member signups in China in order to respect local laws. The mayor of Hungary's capital Budapest says he will rename streets in his city near a planned campus of a Chinese university. He says the project would put Hungary's anti-communist values in question and would commemorate human rights abuses by Beijing. One street will be named after the Dalai Lama, the exiled spiritual leader of Tibet. Another will be called Uyghur Martyrs Road, after the ethnic group that the U.S. and other nations say has been a victim of Beijing's genocide. And a third will be called Free Hong Kong Road. Beijing reacted to the name change by saying Hungary's behavior is contemptible.
Next up, the manuscript for a second edition of Isaac Newton's Principia goes up for auction. The document contains handwritten notes and is expected to go for over $1 million. All that and more here on NTD News.
Hi, folks. Joe Namath here, and if you're on Medicare, this is important. You're now entitled to eliminate copays and get dental care, dentures, eyeglasses, prescription coverage, in-home aids, unlimited transportation, and home-delivered meals, all at no additional cost. Plus, your zip code may have coverage with the Give Back Benefit that adds money back to your Social Security check every month.
I call to get dental, transportation, meals, and the Give Back Benefit. With this virus situation, I call to get everything I'm entitled to. I couldn't believe I was missing out on so many benefits.
With the uncertainty of the virus, you need to get everything you're entitled to. Millions of people have trusted the Medicare Coverage Helpline. You can too. Call now. It's free.
Call 1-800-764-1930. That's 1-800-764-1930 now.
It's just clear as day. The media, whether it's broadcast cable or print media, has become extremely biased. And I started looking online for alternative ways to get information. And I saw an ad for a free trial. And I looked at it and I said, Epoch Times? I mean, come on, is this end-of-days type of stuff? I mean, what are they going to be talking about here? And I said, well, it's a free trial. Let me dig in. Is it giving me both sides? Is it giving me an objective point of view here? I have looked for opportunities to see where they might be biased, and I don't find it. It has given me a level of trust in media that I didn't think I'd ever get back. I love the Epoch Times because it has renewed my faith in the idea that a reliable, responsible, non-biased source of information is available. And I can say that I love it because of that.
France is getting ready to mark the 77th anniversary of the D-Day landings. Preparations are being made for the official opening of the British Normandy Memorial, just in time for the commemorations on Sunday.
The British Normandy Memorial will be officially opened on Sunday, the 77th anniversary of the D-Day landings. The memorial includes the D-Day sculpture by British sculptor David Williams Ellis and a crown and shield designed and created by two French sculptors. The D-Day landings marked the beginning of the liberation of Western Europe. The memorial also features the D-Day Wall, on which the names of those who died are inscribed, and on the 160 stone columns, the names of all those who lost their lives between D-Day and the liberation of Paris in August 1944. The memorial overlooks Gold Beach, one of the three British landing beaches on that momentous day. For the workers who are putting the finishing touches to the memorial, it has been overwhelming just to be part of it.
Well, when you stand here and you look out across the English Channel, it's wonderful just to think about 77 years ago, where the soldiers were coming off the beach, onto the land here, and the bullets firing at them from the Germans. It's a trembling thought just to think about that.
A limited number of guests will take part in the ceremony in France on Sunday. The main U.K. event marking the occasion will be held at the National Memorial Arboretum in Staffordshire, where veterans and their families will be gathered.
A famed museum in Paris is open again after four years of restoration. The venue showcases Parisian history through various art pieces and small treasures. NTD's David Vives brings us there.
It's been four years since these art pieces haven't seen any visitors. The Carnavalé Museum is reopening along with other cultural revenues in France after months of lockdown. It's one of the largest museums in Paris, dedicated to the history of the French capital. Inside, you'll find a glimpse of 2,000-year-old Paris, Paris under the reigns of French King, and Paris during revolutionary times, a story of light and shadows.
The museum was built in the 19th century. Paris was under heavy urban construction, and a lot of old vestiges were found, as well as arts. This is a museum that tells this story, and every Parisian finds a part of themselves here.
The paintings, sculptures, and other artworks were restored, Deschamps says.
These beautiful animals found their true colors again. This pastoral scene is a very well-designed piece of interior decoration.
Even walls were transported, such as the roof of this room. This was made by Charles Lebrun, displaying angels and cherubs. Lebrun was a 17th-century painter, and this was one of his first creations, before he was hired by the French king to work in Versailles.
Here we are in a 17th-century room with golden decor.
A remembrance of the time when nobility resided in golden rooms. The restoration of old interior decorations also shows the evolution of fine arts from the classical Romantic period to the Belle Époque era in the early 20th century. Visitors can also find curious, beautiful art pieces.
Here, you'll find the ancient shop signs. Some of these were very detailed and superbly crafted.
An old Paris that might stay forever, as the museum creators wish it to be. David Vives, NTD News, Paris.
A rare manuscript containing Isaac Newton's handwritten notes is up for auction. It's on his seminal work, The Principia, and is expected to sell for over $1 million. Here's NTD's Andrew Thomas with more.
Legend has it that a falling apple inspired Isaac Newton to formulate his groundbreaking theory of gravity. Whether or not the true story has been embellished, there's no doubt that the British mathematician revolutionized the world of science. Now, a little piece of his work is going up for auction at Christie's in London. This manuscript contains his handwritten notes on his most important publication, The Principia. The first edition was published in 1687 and set out theories for how the universe works, including the laws of motion, universal gravitation, and planetary motion.
This is an autographed manuscript, let's say, a manuscript in the hand of Isaac Newton, talking about his greatest work, The Principia. This is the work in which he reinvented our understanding of the universe. He's working here on a second edition of The Principia, revising, improving, expanding what he'd said in the first edition.
This unpublished paper consists of Newton's revisions and corrections, and was an expected second edition of the work. The manuscript shows a return to form after a difficult period in his life.
He had a complex personality. In the year before this, in 1693, we know that he had a complete nervous breakdown. He suffered from bouts of paranoia. He couldn't sleep. In 1694, when he was embarking on this, he was once again fizzing with the energy of one of the greatest minds the world has ever seen.
Newton achieved great fame in his lifetime. He was knighted by Queen Anne, served as master of the Royal Mint, and was appointed president of the Royal Society.
I think Newton's Principia changes the way people look at the universe, and there's nothing quite like it until Einstein's work into the 20th century.
Despite attempts to refine The Principia, it wasn't until 1713 that a second edition was released. Christie's says documents like this rarely come to market. Isaac Newton's Philosopher's naturalist Principia Mathematica will appear in the exceptional sale, part of Christie's Classic Week in London on July 8th. Andrew Thomas, NTD News.
Coming up, the Cannes Film Festival returns as pandemic restrictions ease, though the festival's director says a favorite custom will be missing this year. Find out more in just a minute. Wes Anderson's The French Dispatch and Sean Penn's latest outing are among the movies vying for the top award at the Cannes Film Festival in July. The famed cinema showcase is revving up for a red carpet revival thanks to easing pandemic restrictions.
The Cannes Film Festival returns this year, and some of Hollywood's best-known names will be on the French Riviera to celebrate. The world's biggest film festival returns after it was canceled in 2020 and delayed until July of this year. But Cannes President Pierre Lescure did say Thursday that attendees will face more restrictions than usual. Festival director Thierry Frémure also said there would be parties and dinners, but one regular feature of the festival would probably be missing from the red carpet.
We have a habit of kissing each other on the steps, so, well, we won't kiss anymore, but our heart will be present just as much.
The 74th edition will see Wes Anderson compete for Cannes' top Palme d'Or prize with The French Dispatch. It's a movie about a fictional U.S. newspaper office in France, and packed full of star names like Francis Dormond, Bill Murray, and Timothee Chalamet. Flag Day, a drama directed by Sean Penn, is also among the 24 films competing for the Palme d'Or.
Filming in Britain for the latest Mission Impossible movie has shut down yet again. Production has halted for two weeks after some working on the set tested positive for the CCP virus. Paramount Pictures didn't say who or how many tested positive, but Britain's Sun Newspaper said star Tom Cruise was not among them. The newspaper cites unnamed sources and says 14 people working on Mission Impossible 7 tested positive after shooting a nightclub scene, adding that Cruise and others on the film set would have to self-isolate. The movie also paused filming in February 2020 because of the pandemic. Production on the film was happening in Venice, Italy at the time. Mission Impossible 7 is set for release in May 2022. Do you ever get ringing in your ears? Tinnitus is fairly common, but some of the best ways to deal with it may not be. Let's take a look.
Welcome to Strong Mind and Body. I'm Gina Marie. Constant ringing in your ears can send you to the brink. Not only does it impair hearing, but it can also make it very tough to focus. It can also interrupt various aspects of daily life. Of course, the best strategy to avoid tinnitus is to take care of your ears and avoid loud sounds. But when it's unavoidable, these strategies can help to But when it's unavoidable, these strategies can help to improve your hearing. Medically known as tinnitus, there are a number of potential reasons you're experiencing ringing in your ears. The most common is exposure to loud sounds. Although COVID-19 has taken away plenty of opportunity for such exposure, no concerts, limited sports crowds, et cetera, threats still exist. Nearby construction, proximity to traffic, or even a limited-capacity event has the potential to put stress on the delicate structures that allow you to hear. After exposure to loud sounds, the tiny ear cells that transmit sound to your brain become damaged. The ringing is often temporary and may go away in a few days. However, if it happens repeatedly, it can become permanent and lead to long-term hearing loss. Once these inner ear ear cells are destroyed, they are lost forever. Long story short, protect your ears with earplugs, closed windows, moderate volumes, and protective headwear when operating loud machinery. Short-term tinnitus may be treated with natural measures. This type of tinnitus may last a few days after an acute exposure to loud sounds. Here are a few methods you can try. Distraction. When you only notice ringing in your ears when there are no other sounds, distracting yourself may help. Listening to music, a podcast, or something else could help dull the ringing. Meditation or yoga may also help clear it up. White noise. When tinnitus hits at night, some background noise may help to drown it out. A fan, a little fountain, or recordings of ocean waves or raindrops can help relieve the ringing and help you get some shut eye. Head tapping. Head tapping is another strategy you can try to fight back against tinnitus. Place your palms over your ears, resting fingers at the base of your skull at the back of your head. With palms still over your ears, lightly tap the back of your head with your index fingers. Do about 50 taps and repeat a few times per day if needed. Of course, the best strategy to avoid tinnitus is to take care of your ears and avoid loud sounds. But when it's unavoidable, these strategies may help you restore your ability to hear.
And that's all for now. Catch us again tonight at 6:30 Eastern. I'm Kevin Hogan.
We have a new channel. Subscribe to us on YouTube at NTD News. Get the highlights of our news broadcast and the most important headlines that we curate especially for you.
Don't let YouTube decide what information you get. That's your choice. YouTube is deleting our videos and cuts you off from a source of honest reporting. Make sure you don't lose access to NTD's news content and take a quick moment to subscribe to our newsletter, so no matter what happens here, you'll keep your access to a trustworthy news source.
We have a new channel. Subscribe to us on YouTube at NTD News. Get the highlights of our news broadcast and the most important headlines that we